I'm ready.
Start this regular council meeting of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, let's leave the call.
Mayor Loughlin.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Here.
Motion first to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the January third city council meeting, uh, the November monthly financial report, and the claims from January seventeenth. Uh, motion please.
No move.
Comments, questions? Okay, let's vote Lesley.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stulman. Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right, we have a little presentation to start us off. Present is Nick McGrath of Trees Forever of our vision project and Kyle Martin. Martin Gardner Architecture. So Nick and Kyle, I think Nick, uh, you want to boot yourselves up? And, uh, the floor is yours when you're ready.
All right, sounds good. I'll just give a brief overview of kind of what went on and then I'll let Kyle talk details about plans and designs. So community visioning is a year-long process that residents went through, starting in last November. We solicited a bunch of public input sessions in a variety of forums to try to come up with some transportation-related improvement plans for West Branch. And those got honed over the course of the year by a steering committee and ultimately developed into concept designs that you hopefully accept into your community and implement over the next several years. While the official process has ended, my role in support certainly has not. Anytime that we're out learning about new grants and programs that might apply, uh, I will certainly pass those on. I'm always available for grant review or assistance in writing those as you start to take on some of these projects. Uh, I was finally got some information today. There's a chunk of money available for some additional design work. Uh, that's available to West Branch. It's it's a grant, but, uh, all it requires is a signature and the money's yours. So that's always nice when you don't have to, um, go out much for paperwork. We'll just throw some money your way. So you have all these concept designs and we hope that you implement them. It, you know, the strategy ultimately has to be developed by you and and hopefully with the steering committee about what makes sense for where you're at as a town. Um, some projects are easy to push off a few years. Some we would consider to be like the low-hanging fruit. Uh, they're pretty easy one-off deal to generate some excitement. So we would love to see something happen in the next couple of years. That'd be great. I'll throw it over to Kyle to talk a little bit about, uh, the design boards that were made and next steps.
Thank you, Nick. Um, yes, so we've, we worked with the, uh, committee over the course of several months and then we had a few, uh, public input sessions and a, uh, public presentation to kind of unveil the, uh, the design work that the committee worked on and that we, uh, helped develop. So I'm going to try and share my screen. Here we go. Uh, so there were, um, a few made, few main concepts that that were, uh, really focused and developed and they kind of rose to the top. And one, the first one was really to create, uh, what we call, oh. What we call community connectivity. And that's, uh, two ma- two main themes with that. There's connecting West Branch with other communities. And then there's also connecting various areas of, uh, internally inside of West Branch to each other. So there are some neighborhoods that that, uh, don't have sidewalks, uh, for pedestrian access or bicycle access, multimodal transportation. A few couple areas to maybe key in on, um, might be around Cubby Park where there's some neighborhoods that are cut off by a waterway. Um, if there's a, the opportunity to connect a bridge or whether pedestrian or, uh, vehicle. Uh, and then there's some areas that that were never developed with sidewalks or the sidewalks were, uh, in in disrepair and could use, uh, new infrastructure to go along with it. Uh, and then, so the first idea of connecting to other communities, that that's the idea of being able to, uh, you know, ride your bike or have other modes of transportation to Iowa City to connect all the trails, all the way to Solon, uh, potentially to get to West Liberty and, uh, and and different areas around the region to promote, uh, commerce between communities and, uh, really help boost that tourism. Uh, so this is a, a map just illustrating that idea. Pull this down still a little bit. Go. Okay, so the next idea really has to deal with, uh, the downtown streetscape. We know that when there's pleasant, uh, areas to walk with commerce and restaurants and shopping and, uh, things like that, that the, those businesses do better. Uh, there's a real community identity involved with, with, uh, with nicer areas. And, um, so with that, uh, so with that, uh, proposing a, a streetscape project and I will try and zoom in. And it's not doing very well. Um, so the, but the, the idea is that we create, uh, safer cross-sections as well. So we create what we call pedestrian bumpouts. So we, uh, pedestrians don't have as far to cross. Uh, when they cross the street, they're more visible to vehicular traffic as they get closer to the curb. Uh, and then that opens up opportunities for seeding, plantings and, uh, and things like that that make the, it just makes for a nicer atmosphere downtown. So while that effort takes place, there's opportunities to improve safety as well. Uh, so we know, uh, as a prime example, we just pulled out kind of one, one key piece that, uh, is probably the most obvious to more, most people is that there's several sidewalks that are raised up, uh, very tall curves. There's stairs that lead directly into the street. And so as that streetscape takes place, there's opportunities to improve, uh, handicap accessibility, improve just mobility in general. Uh, so this corner shows, uh, what it might happen if you were to redo the infrastructure of the street. So new sewer, water, uh, power, burying utilities, uh, replacing, uh, aged utilities. Uh, so this, this option here on the left would involve raising the street so that, uh, basically reduces that drop off from the sidewalk. It reduces stairs into the building. Uh, and that would likely be with a full-on, uh, streetscape project for multi-block, uh, project. And then another option would be if you had to be tackled in more phases, you could potentially lower this, the sidewalk, which would include, uh, which would necessitate some other improvements around the building as far as insulation, uh, at this particular building for the footings, uh, because the, the foundations are relatively shallow and, uh, things like that. So then the next, uh, piece of that that could tie into that is, uh, a renovation of Heritage Square. There's a lot of moving pieces, potentially with this because of, uh, this is currently a through street. Uh, as Downey or, um, Weatherill, uh, dead ends at the post office on the backside there. Uh, so being able to, uh, create more program space in Heritage Square is a, is a priority. But we know that there's some hurdles to go through and some negotiations to work with are the, uh, the National Park Service to the south. Uh, so regardless, if that street were to require to be open, this area could still be redeveloped, uh, with nicer landscape for, uh, more, more of a plaza atmosphere, uh, for farmers markets and events and things like that. Go to the next slide. So the, the, the last concept involves truck traffic through, uh, downtown. So these are just kind of a series of maps that currently, uh, truck traffic goes through Downey Street, uh, hangs the left onto Main Street and then continues out, uh, to the north, uh, and south that way. A real simple option to improve safety and turning traffic is to actually move that turning traffic one block north, uh, onto, I believe, Green Street. We've got a little bit more space. Uh, the buildings are set back a little farther. There's less pedestrian traffic, uh, during the weekdays, uh, up closer to the, uh, closer to the church. Uh, another option would be to reroute traffic to the east and then out of town to the north that way. So essentially remove all truck traffic from downtown. And then there's a very expensive option that would essentially allow truck traffic to continue straight on, uh, Downey Street onto North First Street. Uh, but that would, that would require a construction of a new road and we'd have to negotiate with the adjacent floodplain, uh, there north of downtown. Uh, so one, one key piece to the whole process that we closed with was a feasibility report. And this includes some cost opinions that are, um, of course, part of any, any project. I need to share a different window here. Hold on one second. This window, there we go. Uh, and so it outlines the whole process that the committee went through, all the public input. Uh, it identifies, uh, the, the team that we worked with. We partnered with, uh, Flinker Land Architecture, Lamoni, uh, and, uh, it's got some process photos. It's got all the design boards that I just, uh, went through. It's also got other background.
We lost Kyle.
And I'm back. All right, we'll try this again. Okay. So, uh, it outlines, outlines the whole process and it outlines some other, uh, background information about geography, about water flow, about water table, about flood zones and things like that. And when we get down to the bottom, there's also, uh, scroll down past here. Also has, uh, implementation strategies. God, that keeps popping up.
I don't know if he's trying to get to the cost. Cost of everybody. They're still there?
I am, yeah.
All right, I'm back for hopefully just one more time. Uh, let's see. Okay. All right, one more time. Okay, so there's a few pages in here, uh, regarding implementation strategies. And, uh, essentially it, it tried to help walk through what next steps would be for council, for Chamber of Commerce, for economic development, uh, for a variety of, for whoever might be involved. Okay, I'm having connectivity issues apparently. Try that.
That's what we're doing.
Okay. I'm on a different wifi. Maybe this will work this time. Uh, so with implementation strategies, essentially it walks through what next steps might look like. So in some cases, uh, we'd need to get, uh, an engineer involved. Uh, the city engineer, uh, can certainly assist with that, uh, effort. And, um, it might involve getting surveys so we understand where building elevations are in relation to sidewalks. And, uh, it also identified some, some funding sources. Nick mentioned that there's, uh, funding source for, uh, some additional design work. Uh, so.
Stay with us, Nick. We'll, we'll hang on.
Yep.
And Kyle. I don't know if it's sharing the screen. It's giving them gas. So Nick, while we were waiting, um, so you just mentioned previously a sign something and we could have construction drawings made. Is that what you were alluding to?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know how much of it it will cover. Uh, it's, it's fifteen hundred dollars. But it, it really is as simple as saying, hey, we want fifteen hundred dollars for this project. Uh, you know, we're going to spend it within, I think it's ten months, eleven months. And then we're going to pursue.
So pre-design work, say on the Heritage Square project?
Yeah.
Okay. That wouldn't go very far.
Yeah, they, they sent me the form this morning and it's, there's, there's nothing to it. Um, yeah, I don't know how far fifteen hundred bucks stretches you, but.
It's your one meeting.
Right.
It's an architect.
Yeah.
See you, Kyle.
Okay, well, we'll try it with data instead of wifi. Oh, yeah, so the, the key piece is really the implementation strategies section of that feasibility report. Uh, each project is broken down into what might come next. So, uh, for instance, uh, I mentioned with the down- downtown streetscape, a big piece might be getting engineer involved, uh, get an engineered survey so we know where all the building, uh, main floor elevations are so we can reduce the number of steps or eliminate the steps. We can increase handicap accessibility. Uh, take inventory of, of, uh, of what all is there for utility, infrastructure and things like that. Uh, the Heritage Square discussion, uh, really starts off with engaging the National Park Service and understanding how, uh, the Herbert Hoover National Historic Site, uh, how they feel about the boundaries and any potential easements for access. Uh, either on or off of their, their property because the, the boundary is so close to Weatherill Street. Um, yeah, and really the next, and for, for like the downtown truck route, uh, if there's some low-hanging fruit there potentially, that, uh, some relatively inexpensive relocation of truck route signage can certainly be a, a, a good short-term op, uh, short-term solution to, uh, an otherwise headache for, uh, downtown and for truck drivers. Uh, let's see. Yeah, and then as I mentioned, there are some funding sources listed, uh, at the end of the report as well, that, uh, that kind of talk about some money or talk about, uh, show some sources for money that you can then identify what next steps are to, to get, grab, grab onto that.
All right.
Regardless of working with the park service, I'm pretty sure they don't want to give up any. Not what you want me to say? If I did, the hoops you gotta jump through to do it, I can do it.
Yeah, and that, and that would really, as far as the park service, the, 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 trying to, trying to find out what you can do without having to jump through any hoops, uh, to kind of feel out where, where those boundaries are of what you're currently free to do as well, at will, uh, versus what you'd have to get special permission or acts of Congress and things like that. Obviously, we don't. If you, if you don't have to go through that stuff, uh, you want to avoid that.
More practicality. You have cars turning around in your parking lot. I'm pretty sure they won't like that.
Okay, so we, I guess, what's, what's our next step? What, what do we need to do next? Just talk about it and.
Yeah, so if, if, if there's, if, if there's things that jump out that say, yeah, let's, let's look at that, uh, right now because it's, it, it, it sounds like a, a path of least resistance. That's a good place to start. Um, and, you know, talking never hurts. And so if the, if there's, uh, if there, a little bit of funding can be made available or found, like Nick said, there's some design services that that may be able to help to carry our concept level design to a little bit more, uh, in-depth design so we can understand some of the challenges and problems better. Uh, like I said, we, we pointed out the one corner where we've got a lot of steps, you know, real tall curb. Um, but even, even taking, uh, you know, a survey of, uh, of patrons of, you know, where are some challenging, uh, pieces of, of getting up and down stairs or getting around the downtown. Uh, some of those, some of those things can be relatively easy and, and either cheap or free. Uh, and, uh, but I will say that the, that the real, the real place where the rubber meets the road is, uh, getting a civil, civil engineered survey. Uh, so we really have some science behind what, what we think the problems are. That's those, some of that engineering will tell us exactly what the problems are and open up some, some solutions, uh, on how to solve them.
And from the funding aspect, if you narrow down what you want to do, we can go out and start hunting for some applicable, applicable grants. Um, the first one that comes to mind as well, Mark, they would certainly fund something like the, the park. That's right up their alley. I think those grants are due in June of each year. Um, but it's, they award, you know, hundreds of thousands up to a couple million dollars. So there's certainly some money to be had. It's just, what do you want to tackle when?
Yeah, that's probably our biggest struggle. When we could, Heritage Square might have a little, uh, headway right now. The, the truck routes seems pretty simple. The, the main street is a massive project. That we'll have to soul searching on that one.
Yeah, they, yep, the, the, the main street and the handicap, uh, accessibility, safety projects, those are, it's definitely a big one, uh, that can be tackled a variety of ways. And that, and that's where the expertise of a civil engineer, uh, who does streetscape projects would, would be able to provide advice as well.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a pretty good city engineer, I think, would be good at that. Long would, uh, maybe they can do it. I'm not sure. That's, that's a massive expense. We gotta, gotta buy it first. So I think the low-hanging fruit's probably my preference at some point. Okay. Anybody, anything else? Um, well, thank you very much, Kyle and, uh, Neil for working with us. Really appreciate it. You've given us some good information. We'll let you know what, what we want and I'm sure we'll have questions for you when things get moving.
Sounds great.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your patience with the technology.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Just talked about not spending money and we have a presentation on spending money. It's tough.
I mean, you spend money, it's not hard.
I don't know about, like fifteen hundred dollars. Yeah, there's a, there's a. We have to get some money lined up. Think about, we need to get some money set aside first. All right, we ready to move ahead? Uh, resolution twenty-three dash oh-three amending the city building incentive rebate program. The motion's online.
Oh, second.
So, uh, I got a couple of questions on this. You would do a thousand dollars a year. That's what you're proposing. Um, the current tax bill. Current tax bills. Is that like, right now we're in the, I paid taxes in twenty-two and we pay them again in March of twenty-three. Is that current tax yearly?
We're a year behind.
I know, but we pay in October, we pay in March, right?
I think Leslie may need to jump in on the implementation part.
It's not that it's a big deal, I guess.
Roger, you're right. What I'm requesting is for the current tax bill. So it would be like, what's due the, this fall and, well, last fall and this spring.
All right, for the, that would align with our current fiscal year, I think.
That's correct.
Wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay, my next question is on item number four, uh, one-time transferable. Do we actually have any builders with vacant, with, or sell homes? This would have been, we added this a year and a half ago. So yeah, I wouldn't think we'd have any s- sitting there with builder. Everything would have been purchased by now.
Who are we looking at? The only time they could get a rebate would be if they were the first time owners of that property. And then after that, it's if they, we have had some that buy and within a year, they sell it and move on.
Correct. That's what the policy is intending to eliminate is essentially even my neighborhood, about thirty to forty percent of my neighbors have already sold their home. And then the new ones get the rebate or we paid people that now live in the moon or North Liberty.
That's as part of, as part of the closing. We're not doing that as a month. So the new owner?
Whoever pays the taxes and brings in the tax receipt gets the rebate. So we have had situations where the new person has had to pay the taxes or the current person has had to pay the taxes and then it gets very confusing as to who knows who we're supposed to reimburse. So this would eliminate it. So the builder builds it, they transfer it, you buy the house, you live in it for three years, you've only gotten three thousand dollars, you sell it. We're done. We don't have to try to then
I agree.
transfer to the next person. And then maybe they only stay six months because they got a really great job in California. Now they're so, because we've had those few situations. And we've also had a builder who built a couple of spec homes and they actually got the rebate. Um, that hasn't happened very often, but I mean.
Did they hold on to go?
They held on to it.
For the five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
For real?
Yeah. They rented it out. Yeah, they rented it out instead of. So that will just, it, it, it just, uh, creates less paperwork and tracking by having to transfer one time instead of up until the five thousand is gone.
We're also looking at sending it to seven-year calendar instead of applying.
I can explain that.
Yeah.
It takes two years. It takes two years. Depending on when your home is built and depending on when the county comes and assesses your property. Sometimes it's two, if not three years before you start paying taxes. Most of my neighbors to the north and south of me directly are not paying property taxes yet. I am not paying property taxes yet. The people on the south part of Dawson are paying property taxes. So assessments just came through this December, so I bet in July I'll start paying. Me and my neighbors will start paying property taxes, which is essentially two years after it was built. So then your five years, one thousand dollar would keep it would keep that promise of trying to get the five thousand.
How much? How much are we paying out in the sense? I I saw that somewhere.
How much we paid out so far?
This year?
Um, this year I don't know, but I could tell you in total, um, up until like a few weeks ago, because we kept recalculated, it was around a hundred eighty thousand. But if the number of eligible homes, it should be about six hundred and fifteen thousand. If everybody partakes. Now, there's a lot of people who have not partaken. Um, there's a lot of people that um started and then never turned in receipts. So those are the people we're also trying to address that if you don't turn it in within a year, you don't get it because we don't want them to hold up five years with receipts, walk in and say, I want my five thousand dollars. That's not how it was intended to work. So.
Plus, it wouldn't go with uh budgets. What we budget or how we could budget.
Okay, I guess I don't have a problem.
Do that last seven years.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too. So if we stick to the five, some people only have three years.
So we stopped this last
June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So there's no more new homes. It's so in twenty twenty-seven, I think that we should be through anyway with the people that we had.
Theoretically, you should go with nine, six years. Because they've already gone through a year.
They've at least gone through a year. And if you remember too, when um we did the Tifftasking for the Meadows, because that's where most of the homes are. Um, you know, that first year we did that Tifftasking, which was last year. Twenty-three, um, twenty twenty-one, the list was only very few. And then this last ordinance, if you remember, pretty much everybody. So, I mean, they're all now on the tax rolls, and that's why. So it should go a lot quicker, but we're trying to make sure we can we don't want to short anybody. And that's why Adam came up with the seven years that we would get. You know, it may not be seven years. It might be six, it might be less, but
You're free, I mean, you're free to adjust that five thousand. That's just, I figured you guys probably wanted to keep the original promise. That was the intent.
I I do, but I think if we stopped it a year, over a year ago, a year and a half ago that they should be able to get their, all their money in the six years and not the seven. Because because what could happen is somebody would skip a year, then they go, God, I got another year I can come in and I can get this year's taxes before, and I could have got it all done in six. We could have something that
And Jerry, that's that's why I changed the language. So I said only current year, so that people were not going back and trying to rebate the the year before.
Year, if they skip to say the sixth year, or to say the fifth year, or the third year, whatever. They would have another, another year to get that to get that five thousand.
That is true.
And also
So the idea being is that if you want your five thousand every year consecutive years, you better come in with your taxes. Don't skip a year, then come back in and say, well, I forgot the last year. But I can't get it from last year, but I can get it this year because I got a seven, seventh year to do it.
Well, the um, if the original two also mentioned this, it was based off of the certificate of occupancy. So the certificate of occupancy date, if it was two thousand fifteen technically at the end of twenty twenty, that was your five years. You had, you know, so that technically would be expired. So it wouldn't, I think we'll still catch the people on that. It's just making sure, you know, they don't get forty-five hundred dollars in that seventh year or sixth year, whatever. And then they don't get their tax bill, they don't pay it. But they still get that, you know, we we're still honoring our commitment to them.
What are we paying out?
So it's like, we would owe from what Leslie's saying. After twenty twenty they brought their receipts for all five years. But we would owe them. They can't bring in point one and twenty-two. And we would owe them for their five thousand that we short, or five hundred that we shorted them.
Well, even like the first, and I said, and I can, you know, some of the paint, some of the first payments, it may not even be a thousand dollars. And that's where I think we have to catch up because, you know, someone, I've seen some checks go out and they're eight hundred dollars. You know, they're not a thousand. They're less than a thousand. So if we're saying we're only going to pay you a thousand a year, we're not gonna, if if they only paid eight hundred, we're not gonna pay them a thousand. We're only gonna pay them eight hundred.
That eight hundred might be happening.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. So it's those first years and those really, it's really the first couple of years. We gotta make sure we getting, you know, we're we're making them whole by catching them up on the way and then some of these bigger houses, I said, I haven't seen that many taxes come through yet. So it's hard to know, but there have been some that have been under a thousand, so we wouldn't even pay them their thousand dollars that first year. So you can't assume you're gonna pay them a thousand dollars every year if their portion wasn't a thousand that first year.
So I guess my opinion on this is we're changing the we're changing what we originally agreed to. If lengthening it keeps it from intentionally not doing what we told them we were gonna do is rebate them up back to up to five thousand dollars. Then then we need to lengthen because we need to keep, keep our work.
No, we're still paying them the five thousand, aren't we?
And and last
Seven years.
There's a chance they could get shorted if we cut it off at five.
Yeah.
There's a chance they could get shorter because the first year might be
It might not be, yeah, might not be, they may have paid two thousand, but they don't get all of two thousand. They only get the city portion back, which is usually about fifty percent and a little bit, a little less. So that portion is, it may not be a thousand.
Especially now that the rollbacks are changing. So they're they're paying less anyway. But now we're raising taxes, so we're we're bouncing now.
All right, well.
Yeah, the whole intent is just to, A, make sure we can get them paid back, limit the amount that we're paying, so that we can try to budget better for it. Um, and then also trying to prevent those people who might want to hold up all their receipts and go, well, I didn't know, someone just told me. And here's my five years of receipts. I want to reimburse that. We're just trying to get through. And finish this up. As painful as it's been.
Okay, I'm fine with this. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
All right, pass them the number six, uh, resolution twenty-three dash oh four. Uh, pass estimate number six in the amount of five hundred ten thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-four cents to Boomerang Corporation for the wastewater treatment facility project. Motion.
Move.
I got a question. Two point nine buried piping materials. It charges up for four percent of it. Says complete. Two point ten buried piping labor. Sixty percent. So how can you do sixty percent of the labor with you only using four percent of the materials?
First change of the estimate.
With the same pipe? Must be a different pipe.
What makes you think that? It's right, one's right over the top of the other one.
Must be a lot of upfront labor. Pardon?
Well, I mean, you could go so far as, you can look back on more is it says that back on the other page, which makes it even more confusing is it says material stored summary. We got buried pipe. We got eight hundred seventeen thousand dollars of it being stored. But they only charged us the forty thousand five hundred dollars. I mean, I know, but you don't give us these these things and tell us, hey, we we want sixty percent of the labor, but we've only got four percent of the materials. We need an answer. I mean, we we have to be responsible for for these, this money. Somebody has to have an answer. Why have you charged us sixty percent of the labor when there's only four percent of the material being charged?
He's not on the call to answer, but I can hold this off.
Percent of the way done with the budget?
How they, how, 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 when they've only got four percent of the materials?
I can't explain. I don't know enough about the engineering, so I'm not gonna speak. I'm not gonna speak on Dave's. I'm sure he is.
Not to be able to pass that on.
Any of that, okay? That's an explanation.
Because you can order the material, and I can get the material in at my plant where I work. Use it up. I got forty-five days to get that invoice since you shimmered.
Well, this actually, it says it's stored, and then it has Schimberg in the description, so maybe maybe what they're saying is that stuff's sitting in a timber. But it's still, so so then how, so then how they do the sixty percent of the labor? When it's sitting in a timber.
materials sitting on site, but they have to give me an invoice to timber yet. I can buy a sixty thousand dollar pump, have it installed, but I still haven't paid the invoice yet, whoever I bought the pump from. So I, if I'm a third-party contractor, I can't charge somebody that cost. I haven't received. I haven't made payment for receivability yet.
They're
There's a lot of trusting in engineering. Because you don't pay me that money and they're gonna come after you, but yeah.
They're not, they wouldn't possibly charge for labor, even though they haven't done it.
Well, Boomerang
In anticipation.
Boomerang isn't a third party. They can done all the work, not have to bill yet, shimmered. They might have only been building four percent. But they put in, they have all the pipe under there. He hasn't piped where he's there to store. That's all.
It's been done.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just describing a scenario where this makes sense. You're gonna have to ask Abe.
Matt's got something.
The the only other thing that I could think of would be, I I don't do these, so I don't know. But some, some pipe installations, the labor's gonna be more like, if they're doing bigger, like right now, they're putting in large pipe. A lot of manholes, structures. If that's what it is, that the labor on those is more expensive, so that that could account for it. I don't, I don't know for sure, because I, Dave does all of this.
But that's a big, that's a big discrepancy.
That feel like
That's a big discrepancy.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at
Well, they are asking all, but still that probably eight hundred thousand stored material, stored by stored by only forty thousand says it's been installed. Trusted engineers, I guess.
I guess at the end of the day, they're gonna have to put a hundred percent of the pipe in. And they're gonna have to do a hundred percent of the labor, and they're only getting that number that's on the left, so.
At the end of the day, is if two point ten comes up over a hundred percent. And then, yeah, it becomes a much bigger competition.
A big chunk of the pipe that's left to go in also is fifteen hundred or a couple thousand feet of uh six-inch water, maybe. Which doesn't cost as much if they were per foot. Put in is the thirty inch. I mean, that that's probably what some of that is. I did, but I, like I said, I just, I don't know for sure since So on the initial like, that that we would have had, would have had, like so much per linear foot for installing water, and so much per linear foot for installing thirty inch. That's the only thing I couldn't mention, and that would probably account for I mean, there's still a lot of big pipes sitting out there. I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly how that would. I know we pay for pipe once it's on site. So we we should probably pay for things that are sitting out there and
Well, I mean, you're not looking at the numbers. I mean, it's huge, dude. It's like, it's like sixty percent is the labor of a four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and they've only done four percent of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of pipe. I mean.
Well, we're not gonna get anything except that, so we get some answers.
And we're not gonna not pay them. I just those are things that we need to pay attention to and 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 get answers.
They asked for a change or change two point ten to higher, yeah.
For labor?
Yeah, for labor, that's what you start to, yeah, or even if two point nine goes up, those are now
All right, um, anything else, anyone? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stulman.
No.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right, resolution twenty-three dash oh five, accepting a deed Kent and Judy Kasser for abandoned railroad driveaway property.
Second.
And wheeling everything around it, huh?
Looks like it.
I know, I know we've talked about this, and it's a no-brainer, but it's just one of those things where it feels like a trick. You know, everybody always tells you if it's too good to be true, right?
Like a oil tank.
Yeah.
Same problem.
Couple little real, real tiny there's unknown owners, because I did a little bit of poking around before.
Yeah, I've seen that before. That's how did they come up with the problem? Well, I mean, I have to, I heard somebody living on uh, weird spot because he apparently owned up
I don't know. Let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
All right, resolution twenty-three oh six, proving the revised judge description for the quarter position. Uh, lead water wastewater operator. Uh, lead water wastewater operator. Motion please. Second, anyone?
Sorry.
Okay. I've read this sometime. It gives this position, uh, more responsibility. Second in command.
This position coming in or the.
Yeah. Vote please.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stillman. Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right, moving on, uh, park and rec director recruitment update, what did you find out the last couple days?
So, um. We had a nice, interesting meeting with some different opinions, which is good. It just means we had a couple candidates we could see in the position. Um, a draft offer has been sent, needs to be double checked. Um, by my clerks to make sure there's anything wrong with it, but. Um, I've had that conversation with their preferred candidate in working with. Um, references on a second candidate, because sometimes people do turn it down. So, but we've got a good one and two. That we are looking forward to, um, hopefully one of those two accept and we start talking about that in our February meeting. So.
Probably about all considering. Good candidates. Anything for you, Adam, city administrator report?
Um, yeah, my little soapbox, um. I don't know the best way to address it, but I obviously feel. A little bit defeated on what's going on in Des Moines. I don't know the best way to address it. I guess in my, my point is I'd like a little bit of help from council. Um, talking to our state legislatures, they do have, um, kind of a draft. Letter, um, but there are a number of changes. That can affect us revenue wise, process wise. Um. And then takes away. Your ability as a council member to make decisions, um. As it, it just gives more authority to the state. Um, I picked on our, our reps. Couple times last year, and I feel if I'm the squawking person, that they're gonna just start ignoring me. So I do have some draft. Language, it would be ideal, um. The biggest couple things obviously are the ten percent down payment, which we talked about in our work session and how that could delay projects by twenty years. In which. If my projections are true, it takes a hundred and twenty years to reconstruct. You know, a street in front of your neighborhood, we're gonna add twenty years onto that, it's gonna be a hundred and forty years, um. If we're talking urban renewal changes. Um, let's say what we're you, what we're doing for the roundabout to help pay for the roundabout project, we're using some. We'll be using some tip for urban renewal money. Um, what would essentially happen is in the future for those types of projects, that has to be a referendum vote. You as council members do not have the authority if that gets passed. Um, to say, hey, Johnson County is gonna give us a million. What we'll have to do is we'll have to have voters vote on it, um, and then essentially. If, let's say those things get turned down. We're using, next year, we're gonna loo, use about three hundred and eighty thousand in urban renewal or new growth money. To pay for projects. And that's roughly a two and a half dollar, um, tax. So if we don't have that money, it'll either be the projects don't get done, or it'll be a two and a half dollar increase in taxes or roughly about four hundred dollars a year. In taxes, if we're not allowed to use urban growth, urban renewal growth to pay for projects. We'd have to take it out of people's pro, direct property taxes.
But we couldn't borrow the money unless we had ten percent down. Of course, you notice they did this after they required us to do an eight million dollar, uh, wastewater facility, because. Who on God's green earth has got ten percent of eight million dollars later on?
Yes, I've got talking points, but I could really use your help. Giving them a call or an email would be greatly appreciated, so it's not just coming from me. I think. Comes down to even us doing zoning changes, we have developers on our committee, you know. At least coordinating and builders coordinating with us when we're talking about changing, changing zoning laws. Could be the same way with the state legislature. They should be communicating and coordinating with us if they're thinking about changing rules. Um.
I don't know where Zach Walls is, exactly, but I can't have an idea.
He's no longer our, he's no longer, well. To be specific, not that I'm trying to call him out, but, uh, Bobby is the chair of that committee and he sponsored that bill. Which is HF one, so it's the very first bill they are trying.
Honey Kaufman and Jeff Kaufman, once a year would come to a council and and talk to us and, you know, it's been on three years now. You know, he hasn't made an appearance. Would that be something that we could do? Ask him if he'd like to come.
I think we can always ask, and I think it'd be nice to get, yeah, a formal letter. From us together that says yes. Come to a council meeting or meet, say hypothetically with our advocacy committee, even on EMS issues would be nice too, so.
My dad had, my dad has the White House number. You know, you ought to.
Email those to us then.
Yep, you do.
You ought to get us, when you do your little mayor dinner every month. You ought to see if we can just do a Cedar County city coalition and.
Yeah, I don't know where the other, we're, we're the different end of the county though.
That stuff's gotta hurt, you know.
Okay, um. There, city staff, anybody?
I do have one thing. I received a call today from, uh, Iowa City. They got a call from the Johnson County landfill or Iowa City landfill or whatever it is. Um, Cedar County residents have been going there. They were told by somebody in town, um, that it's okay for them to take their stuff there. And it is not okay to take their stuff there, and I was supposed to pass the word around. It is illegal to take trash across county lines, so.
Johnson County.
Unless you're a Johnson County resident.
Unless you're a Johnson County resident, so if you live in Pickford. If you live in Pickford, it's okay, but everyone else in the city limits is not supposed to take stuff there, so. If anyone's asking you, they do need to take it to the Cedar County transfer station.
Well, I've taken stuff there, but it's been from a Johnson County job.
Yeah, so that you too.
I'm just relaying them, I told you I would relay the message.
See, and that's why we gotta pay that tipping fee or whatever to Cedar County, because if you don't pay that, then then they can't even use that one either.
Uh, mayor and council, I don't think I have anything.
The tough part about them is they, they charge by the cubic foot or whatever and not by the weight. So like my dump trailer, they just figure out how many. Cubic feet, and then, and then they charge you an astronomical amount. It might only, I might only got a thousand pound, yeah, depending a lot, I guess if you're hauling pea gravel in there.
If you're hauling a whole load of. Things in there, cheaper than going to down, you go that way.
But if you got two mattresses and a, and a couch in there, you're, you're gonna get hosed.
Yeah, they're good.
If I take a load of.
Do that with me.
All right, anybody, anything else? Motion to adjourn, someone?
Move.